So it's 7:02 and I'm going to call to order the November 26th meeting of the Board of Library Trustees. First thing is our minutes from October 22nd. And once again, thank you for the work there. Any corrections? Is there changes?
Oh, we have a name correction, right?
Okay, and Marie has.
Yeah.
So I'm over to accept the minutes as corrected.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, then financial and legislative. I first, I'll start with a letter that we got today from the Massachusetts Board of Library Commissioners saying that Chusbury has been awarded once again state aid. It's actually got three, for a total of, the first payment will be $27,000. There'll be two payments, but it's divided between a library incentive grant that's close to $14,000, a municipal equalization grant which is $7,400, and a non-resident circulation offset which is $5,900. I guess because of the way we send books around.
That's right.
Yeah, so that'll be the first of the two payments. And so, once we do the budget, we have to remember that the state aid is dependent on having a certain amount of materials that we buy. Now, we'll go into that when we discuss it. So first of all, let's take a look at the year-to-date report. It looked kind of busy. Normal, very.
No surprises, and actually.
Well, I think it's a library director report. We'll do that for financial.
Oh, okay.
So, the, oh, actually, yes, so do you want to do the report first, or should we?
Either one.
Okay, I started with the financial.
Okay.
Let's do the library director's report.
Okay.
Okay, so, once again, busy as usual. Community reading project, is, are we almost done with that now?
We are done. Actually, last Saturday was our last activity. It was a book group, a book discussion group, one of three that we had scheduled. So, we had close to 30 programs that took place in October, November, December. Some programs, very small attendance, but really meaningful for the people who attended, and some very big programs. So it was, it was a really exciting program, project to do, especially because of all the different parties that were involved in this project. It was a little different for us than previous community reading projects. Elder Services Wister, the senior center, the recreation department, the school department, Orchard Grove. We just had a real nice mix of interests and abilities on the team. So that was good, that was really helpful.
And we actually had to buy 50 more copies.
We did, so we ended up distributing 200 copies, free copies. And there was still more interest, but we decided at that point, yeah, we had copies for loan at the library.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And so, who decides what book you're going to read in the community reading project? How's that happen?
Sometimes, in past years, we've done some voting. This year, it was just who came upon that book and we felt that it would have a lot of meaning for people.
Oh, does the library stay?
Yes.
Does it selection?
Yeah. And, well, sometimes in past, we've opened it up to the public. Sometimes it's been based on, in past years, when we've done it, based on.
We need to leave that open, Jeff.
Oh, do we? Okay.
Yeah. Jeff?
Sorry.
We do need to leave it open.
We need to leave it open.
Sorry.
Yeah, sorry, thank you though. When it was part of the Big Read, which was the National Endowment for the Arts funding, they have a set list of titles you can choose. This was a project that was not funded by them, so we had more flexibility in the title. And it really came out of, I believe, our partnership with the senior center in the community partnership program they have where they bring together people throughout the community, I think it's quarterly meeting, police, fire, different service agencies, different town departments, to just look at what are the needs of elders in the community and, you know, just think about ways that we can partner together. And that's where our memory cafe came out of. And so this book seemed like a good match too, for kind of furthering the interests of seniors. But it really, it really was more expansive than just seniors. Yeah.
It was such a beautiful writer.
Yes. Really beautifully written book. And the documentary, we had two screenings of the documentary led by Dr. El Kern, who runs a number of area hospice businesses. And that was, that was very interesting too, to have a medical professional lead a discussion on that. So that was good.
Congratulations on that.
I'm glad.
Very successful program.
Motion to approve director's report?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so now we'll get to financial and legislative. I've already told you about the state aid. So, let's go and look at the fiscal year 2020 year-to-date.
We're in a very good position at this time of year. And we're getting closer to mid-fiscal year, another month away. This was printed on the 18th, so, you know, it's a little bit dated, but still, we're in very good condition.
It's always amazing to me how well it seems to work month to month. Yeah, okay, do we need to approve? I don't think so. All right, so next, we, the big issue, bigger issue is the 2021 operating budget development. And there's been some changes in the process. Ellen will tell us about.
Right, and I did print out the spreadsheet, because I know sometimes it's hard to do that. It is a little hard to read, unfortunately. So you have your computer backup if you want to look at anything specific in terms of goals, the language of goals or anything like that. But I also provided on your packets draft two of the budget goals. I realized there was a little bit of disconnect when we had the strategic plan update we approved last month. I didn't get those integrated into this, the budget goals document. So I did have a draft two I'd like to have the trustees approve, you know, confirm and approve. There's nothing new on it, it's just the integration of the action plan and this set of goals that we always develop as part of our budget. I think when there were two of us doing it this year, I didn't make the connection, you know, to get that back in there. So I'd asked if we could get approval of that, and then I'll talk about.
Oh, it is the yellow highlighting?
The yellow highlighted are items that were taken from the action plan that were not on our budget goals originally.
Okay.
And I think it's useful to have them all in one place for the town manager and finance committee to see when we bring them forward to them. I just feel like it's much more succinct than the action plan for them to be able to see all that together.
Just a question about high-cost library programs with paid advertising. Where do you see the advertising occurring?
Probably Friends or state aid.
Oh, where, where do we see it occurring?
Yeah, yeah. We're looking at, do we want to do any, like, Facebook advertisement? Or do we want to do any advertisement in any papers? We want to leave that as an option. We felt like a program that might have benefited from paid advertising would have been the Young at Heart Concert, for instance, something that was a high-cost program. It's not something we tend to do. We have done it for some of our community reading events in the past, but just as an option.
And I'm curious about this website. What do we think the cost is going to be of developing the website?
Well, we have some costs right now, or running for the development costs at $500. We have the annual cost for that, for the platform fees and so forth. And the development costs were actually pretty low because the platform we were looking at is designed for libraries and allows you to import a lot of data yourself. So, under $1,000 to get us started.
Wow, that's really.
Yeah, it was very good.
Wow, yeah.
The team looked at a number of different options for a new website for the library and ended up recommending this vendor.
Now, is there another town whose website you would recommend we go look at? Just so we could get a feel for what the site might look like?
You know, probably what I want to do, I might have our tech person who was leading that committee, Mike Zeller, come in and give an overview for you to look at what the team had looked at, so they can show you some of the comparison. At this stage, we're not, we're not moving forward yet. We are listing it as a budget goal, but we're not ready to launch forward. That was something we were going to present as a separate item to the trustees, to show them what we're thinking of.
And how's the town with integrating it with the rest of the town site?
So, the town IT director has been very supportive of the library looking at an independent website because the, the content management system the town uses for a website is not designed to support the kinds of information services that libraries offer across their websites. And if you look at our website, you'll see it's, the very extensive list of tabs going down the side is just so overwhelming to most patrons. And there are a lot better options for libraries, a lot more flexibility. A content management system that the town uses is very structured in terms of the look, the layout, how you allow people to access content. And it, it ends up being a challenge for people to find things.
I think we probably always felt you there.
And we think we can do a better job by looking at a website that, a platform that's specifically designed for libraries. And also, a big piece that we're missing out of the content management system is the marketing end of it. We like to market our programs, and it's very difficult to do. We even, the Friends of the Library, for instance, pay for an email listserv service for the library because the email component that comes out of the content management system, if you get anything from the town, you may see, you actually get a little, you get a brief email with instructions to open up a link. That's not how, that's not how people will often access information. They won't even take that step of following the link. You need a clear visual about your program and that kind of thing. So, we think we could do a better job marketing and making it easier for people to find information. So we have a committee that's been working on it for about six months. It's about five staff members who have been working on it from various departments, especially those that make good use of the website. And they've reviewed three or four different vendors and have made a recommendation for one. But I'd want to bring that back to the trustees before we take that action. This is kind of the planning in terms of moving forward.
Yeah, it'd be great to look at another site.
Yeah.
Clearly not optimal.
No. Yeah.
Actually, I'm so glad the town got a Facebook page. It's made it so much easier than trying to find things on the website.
Yeah, Valerie Clumery, Clumery, out of the town manager's office does a wonderful job with that Facebook page.
I know what streets are closed. Okay, so, any other questions about the new goals? Can I, I think we do need to probably prove the goals. And so, can I have a motion to approve the goals? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Wait, we skipped the MAR and the MER.
Okay, so I can do that as part of the budget discussion.
Okay.
And so, just a reminder, the MAR is the Municipal Appropriation Requirement. That's the level of funding the state requires your library to have in order to meet minimum standards and be certified. And the Municipal Appropriation Requirement is a very simple formula that says basically, you take the average of the past three years, and you have a .25% increase. Now, that small an average over three years, as you can imagine, is not a huge increase. It's intended to be a maintenance of effort kind of increase. So that's one standard that we have to look at when we do the budget. The other is the Materials Expenditure Requirement, which for a population our size says we have to spend 13% of our budget on materials. That's the trickier one for us because it's a moving target and it's also a challenge sometimes in terms of getting that amount. So in the last page of the spreadsheet I gave you, I have shown what the, there's on the far right column, there's a number of fields. One is the Municipal Appropriation Requirement, is $1,395,386. That's, as I said, a simple calculation, and I always list that for the trustees to see. And then I list a series of Material Expenditure Requirement calculations based on a number of different things. First, the first one in white is the Materials Expenditure Requirement calculated on the Municipal Appropriation Requirement. So if we got a budget that was set at the MAR level, the Municipal Appropriation Requirement, Materials Expenditure Requirement, what we would have to spend on materials would be $181,400. And then, going down further, if the Materials Expenditure Requirement in the gray box, if it was calculated on the Level Service Budget, which I'll review with you as we go through the spreadsheet, the Materials Expenditure Requirement would be $194,356. If the Materials Expenditure Requirement was calculated on the Enhanced Service Budget, which is all the goals that the trustees have identified, the Materials Request would have to be $199,464. And then, the next piece is something that has to be determined. The Materials Expenditure Requirement based on whatever budget is approved at town meeting. So that's the last one that we show later in the process. So, going back to page one. So you have a green column, which is the existing budget for fiscal year 2020 that we are in. Then you have fiscal year 21 request for the Level Service Budget. In other words, if we were to carry services forward, what would that cost us? And then, farther right is kind of a grayish, I guess, bluish gray, is the Enhanced Service Budget. And that's if we were to provide some improvements, and they all happen to be in the salary and wage account. So, the, the Level Service Budget and the Enhanced Service Budget, the difference is the added staffing costs.
Which looks like it's $34,293.
That's correct.
Okay.
Right. Now, the only other piece that gets impacted if we, between, the difference between the two budgets is the Materials Expenditure Requirement. Because if you spend more on salary, you have to spend more on, on materials. So if you go down to the second page, under Supplies and Materials, the large, the really thick column, you'll see Library Materials, it's account number 540140. For a Level Service Budget, I'm recommending we request $194,000. For a Level, excuse me, for an Enhanced Service Budget, in the bluish gray, I'm recommending we request $199,000. You'll note that it's slightly below the Materials Expenditure Requirement we just discussed. One was $194,356, the other was $199,464. That's very typical, that we're below the Materials Expenditure Requirement. Usually, we're a lot further below because we use trust funds to typically, about $10,000 in trust funds to enhance that material spending to meet the requirement. I am concerned this year, for a couple reasons, that we don't want to go too far below the Materials Expenditure in the municipal funding request. The reasons I am recommending we target closer to the actual requirement is because we have just, the town has just completed a classification and compensation study. And as you, you had copies of that given to you last month, I think it was. There were some increases recommended for a number of library personnel. Four people were, saw some increases this year. But there were increases basically recommended across the board. If the Personnel Board was to take any action on those changes, on those recommendations, it would obviously impact our budget, which would impact our materials. So I'm thinking that it's safer to be closer to the actual requirement using state, excuse me, using trust funds to make up any difference that might come from any personnel changes. The other thing is, I don't know what your, the salary range for the new director is much higher than the salary, current salary range. So you might have a challenge there, meeting that materials, meeting the difference for the Materials Expenditure Requirement. And then, we also don't know what, every year, the Personnel Board makes a recommendation for cost of living. If it's 2% or 3%, that's also not calculated in here. Okay, so, the Materials Expenditure Requirement is kind of the hardest piece we try to meet every year. It's hard in terms of getting the adequate funding. And then, second, it's hard in terms of making sure, as we get closer to the end of the fiscal year, that we're really on target. So that's, that's something that, you know, it's important to pay attention to. And I'm feeling that this year would be the year with so much ambiguity in terms of all those three things I mentioned, to make sure we're pretty close to that target as we start the fiscal year. I met with the town manager and the financial assistant to the town manager, David Snowden, because there was some discussion, and you may recall this, of including all the upgrades to the public, to the computers in the building within the operating budget instead of the capital budget. I had concerns about how that would impact the Materials Expenditure Requirements. So in the very bottom of the last page in green, I provided the town manager some calculations for if you included in the materials budget that $43,524. Does everybody see that?
Yeah.
That would bump the MER up to $200,000 or $205,000. So he agreed we would not put it in the library's operating budget. He felt that was also a real challenge. And he will decide whether it goes into the IT budget for the town and then gets dispersed from there, or if it stays in capital or out of his office. But he agrees we should not put that in the operating budget. We have enough of a challenge with the Materials Expenditure Requirement. So, all of the, all of the numbers in the Level Service Budget are basically just to continue services as we know them. And then, in the Enhanced Level, you can see that we are requesting 10 additional page hours per week, a part-time reference librarian at 19 hours per week, and a third seasonal circulation aid for 20 hours, about 21 hours per week for the nine busiest weeks of the year, which are our summer months. We have two seasonal aids right now. For a number of years, we've been seeking a third to really designate that third aid for the children's room, which sees a lot of business in the summer. And as part of the town manager's effort to target requests to goals, you'll see in the far right column the goals that are identified for those specific, specific requests.
Okay, so, should we get a motion to approve this? So, what are the next steps on this?
Oh, thank you, well, so here, thank you for letting me clear. So, we have, we have done our December vote as the final vote on the budget every year. The town manager has, with this new, what's it called?
The Clear Gov?
Clear Gov, thank you. I'm doing Civic Plus, which is the website. Clear Gov, which is the new platform that the town manager is using to manage the budget development process and make it clear for the community. It's a really nice platform. But they moved up the dates a little bit, so he was actually hoping that everything would be done by now for all the departments. And I communicated to him that we already have a schedule going forward. And, you know, typically, the trustees vote in November on the draft, consider it, and then come back, excuse me, consider it in November and come back in December when you have an earlier meeting. This year would be December 10th for the vote. He was okay with that. He has on the Clear Gov right now all the Level Service numbers, so that he can at least see what those numbers look like. And I have actually given him and David Snowden a copy of this spreadsheet, so he knows what the total numbers we're looking at. So you have the option of either voting tonight to approve the budget or just accepting the draft and then coming back in December. I think the town manager would be fine either way. You know, he has, he has the gut of the budget concept and numbers through both the goals and, and the spreadsheet that he has. But I suspect it would make it easier for him to have a firm decision because he is trying to get these numbers up on that, that platform. It has a very nice feature that allows basically the departments to input the data, and then the town manager's office gives commentary and goes through an approval, a review and approval process on that, and then the community can see all that information too. So, there would be a benefit, I believe, to getting it voted tonight. It would save, I think, some work out of the town manager's office, and it would also make it kind of more in line with the rest of the town.
And how do we indicate that we really prefer the Enhanced Budget?
So, in the past, we, because the idea of those Level Service and Enhanced Budget have been, a couple years now, that that's been the way it's been presented. I take the authority from the Board of Trustees and I submit to the town manager a letter, basically an email letter that says, here is the budget request of the trustees. You'll note, these are the goals, I outline the major goals. And I provide a copy of the spreadsheet. And we also would then, at some point, as we did last year, enter the Enhanced Level when the town manager approves the departments to enter the Enhanced Level.
Oh, okay, so this is a, processes to, for every department?
Exactly. Yes, for every, thank you, yes, for every department. So, he has it in two stages. When I submit, I actually submit part of it on the platform, and then part, through the communication of documents we submit to him. And I basically tell him, this is what the trustees have voted. But we provide, we segregate the information for him the way he wants to get the Level Service and Enhanced. We've always done that anyways. We've always provided very clear information about what's beyond Level Service.
There's a column, as I recall in the books, there's a column for the existing budget.
Yes, right.
And the Level Service.
Right. Yeah, for, you know, you can see we've never, we don't integrate our additional personnel into the upper levels. We leave it down there, so it's very easy for the Finance Committee or anyone to consider. I think it's just a clearer way to work.
Okay, can I get a motion to support the, to approve the budget? The, both the Level and Enhanced Budgets? Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so, that done.
Thank you. I think they, that the town manager's office will very much appreciate it a little earlier than expected.
One last thing to do before the time.
Yeah, well, yeah, that's why we may want to think about that.
So next is the trust fund report. Everything was in the right color. So. I would like to see red.
And it looks a little healthier then.
Yeah.
We've been running just under, for interest, net income, we've been running under $3,000, and this was $3,375 for the quarter. So that's good news.
All the markets.
Yes.
Okay. So next, we have Facilities and Grounds. We have some updates for both the artwork and the.
Right.
The wall is good.
Seal. Yeah, so the wall, the metal artwork of.
It looks great.
Isn't it beautiful? Yes.
Sure.
Yes, it's the etching he did. I think that piece is just remarkable. Makes me very happy every time I walk up those steps and I see little kids running their hands along them. It's perfect. And then, the lower parking lot sign was installed. There was a problem, I think I mentioned last meeting, where they had clipped the power line. Yeah, right. So, but things are better, the sign is in. There's still some landscaping that has to be done around that, but that won't happen until the spring. And then, we're considering options of lighting, so.
Would you put like a light to the street?
Yeah, so there is power.
Because it is a very dark sign.
Yeah, so there's a couple options we could look at. One is Mike Hale, Selco General Manager, suggested maybe something off a light pole. But we also have power to the, to the courtyard. On the rear side of the stone wall, there's actually power, you know, the little seat wall there?
Yeah.
There's power there. So it's something, you know, we'll have to think about and figure out the best way to do that, whether it be a small offlight or something from the pole. I'm gonna, I think I'm gonna ask Mike Beganna his thoughts on it.
Yeah, yeah.
If someone has a good vision of that kind of thing.
Okay, so is the artwork done now? That, the external stuff with the completion of the big tail, or was?
Oh, yes, oh, yes, yes.
That's it, okay.
Yes, it's all done, yes, yeah.
Very nice, yeah. Okay.
So we, can I just acknowledge Bob Turekian, who has provided the funds for both of these amazing gifts?
Yes. Yes.
You know, the dragon commissioned just for that site. You know, the artist did a lot of work in preparation. And then the beautiful town seal, you know, modeled after the town seal that's on the Burns Bridge. Mr. Tocanyan, Chief Joseph, has just really made a huge difference in not only the libraries, you know, but many other sites.
Yes, indeed.
Many thanks to him.
All right, so speaking of gifts. We also have the Sunday sponsorships.
It's complete. The full season is complete.
Yes.
It's wonderful, yeah.
So thank you to the many donors.
And then, as you know, we're open on Sundays, one to five, and it's a very busy day for all ages.
Great. Okay, then we have an update to the Library of Things lending policy.
Yes, and this is to respond to a gift that Selco has discussed with us. Selco is looking at providing a generous donation. I don't have an exact amount to mention yet, but to add technologies that could be part of our lending libraries in the future. And has asked, I've asked our tech staff to give some examples of, to research some examples of things they might want to make available for loan to patrons. But as we were reviewing the Library of Things policy, we felt it might be good to have an acknowledgement on the form, which is on the back page, that just when they have an item that's over a hundred dollars, because some of these things would be more expensive, to have an acknowledgement that the person who's checking it out is checking out a costly item. And we'll have to figure out, we would have to figure out in the processing of the items how we mark that clearly for staff to be able to be sure that that gets acknowledged on the confirmation. But we, you know, we have a very regular borrowing of our Library of Things, our tools and that kind of thing. So I don't think it would be too difficult to work that out.
I just have one question. So up to six things can be checked out at one time? That seems like a high number.
Yeah, well, some of the, I know, it does, it does, but we don't, we don't seem to run into like a lot of demand. There are some specific pieces of this collection that have a high demand that we could probably buy two or three of them. For instance, the ice cream maker and the weed, I don't know what the tool, the weed extractor. No, it's like a little hand tool. It's really, oh my goodness, it's very popular.
Digs it up, digs up your roots.
Yeah, and you stand on it and it pushes down and takes up really hard roots. Dean, do you know the name of it? Did it go through tech services? But it's extremely popular, those two. But in terms of people being turned away, I don't think so. And what we thought was some of like the cooking tools, sometimes you want a number of different things at once, yeah. We haven't had anyone abuse it, so.
How, is there a list?
Upstairs is a great binder at the reference desk that shows you pictures, some information about each thing. And then it also tells you if it's in or out. Just like in our games.
Is there any thoughts putting that online so people can see what the catalog is?
Oh, it is online.
Oh, it is online.
Right, but it's also, people like to see it, you know, so that's a way.
A picture of it.
Yes, you can, if you look up tools in the library.
It's like this wonderful weed removal tool it's like. Time for envisioning.
But if, you can find it online. You can't reserve it online as the policy says, but you can find it.
Okay.
And, you know, at least know what we own. And you can look at kind of a description and an image of each item in a binder upstairs as well.
Okay. All right, so we've covered. I can't remember, is it a weed that it can be out and not renewed, right?
I believe so, I think.
When I was reading it.
It's been a while since I, yeah. Yes, seven days not renewed.
Because I'm on the wrong page.
Yeah.
Do you think the technology will lead different lengths of time or anything?
I don't know. They're still working on the list, so I, I don't know.
They haven't really given you indications as to what kinds of technologies they're doing? They've covered us a lot of ground.
Yes, it does. They were looking at some assistive technology as well as kind of general, so assistive technology for people who might have vision or hearing issues. They were looking at some technology for simple, not dated, excuse me, traditional technologies as well as things like sewing machines, things that, yeah, you know, that we still get requests for typewriters, for instance. There's a new interest in typewriters, as well as more modern technologies. So they have a list that they're working on and starting to research. There are some other libraries that have some of these.
Where do you get a typewriter?
Oh, you can get one.
Are they?
Oh, yes, yeah, yes, they are.
Do they make the old manual ones anymore or are they all electric?
I don't know about that, but I know that, yeah.
And are they, do they have ribbons?
That presentation that we had at the trustee meeting, they showed Maker Space.
Yeah.
And it was a lot of that kind of, I'll say, old tech there, available for the public.
Yeah.
And they showed all kinds of cleaning machine, typewriters and saw machines.
Is people want to transfer video to, that kind, those, you know, kind of things that you don't need to own, but you want to have access to.
That's perfect for libraries.
Yeah, exactly.
Some libraries actually have them in the library.
Right.
Where you can do it there.
So we, we don't have the final list yet, but they're, Ariel and Mike are doing a lot of work on that right now.
Yeah, yeah.
And I think Mr. Hill said in the New Year's when we'll have a final decision and number.
That'll be exciting to see what they come up with, yeah.
It could be a costly upfront cost, but I mean, probably more than pay for itself.
I'm thinking about technology, I worry about it getting broken.
Right.
Exactly.
That's why some, I think some libraries actually have stations in the library so you have, so you have staff that can help you with it if you.
The benefit of making it loanable is it counts as a materials expenditure.
Ooh, and also it's staff time.
I was thinking of that now.
And the circulation. We don't have time with the staff.
That's true.
Yes, the staff in his heart, yeah.
I hope that weed extractor has a, has a label on it, not for use of under five years old.
Yeah.
I'm gonna look that one up when I get home. We need a vote. And the change to the.
A motion to approve the, the policy change for the lending library.
I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you. All righty, and next, personnel, and we'd like to hear from the search committee for the new director.
Can I make a request?
I'll make my own.
I would like to recommend that we go into executive session for.
Okay, because we'll be mentioning specific individuals and that. So we'll have, I'll ask for motion to do that at the end of the meeting and everybody has to agree to it before we go into executive session and then the TV can, you know, turn off. Okay, all right, thanks, Kevin. Friends of the library, holiday open house coming up.
Yes, Saturday, December seventh, from one thirty to three. Excuse me, yeah, one thirty three, that's right. Santa coming and crafts and games. And also this year they have an attic treasures, which is sale of Christmas decorating items, which will be out here in the community commons. And actually the Friends Board has just approved the Council on Aging to have a table as well for sale of their calendar, no, cookbooks, yes, cookbooks and some other items. So that's kind of nice to have that partnership. That's a huge event planned by Ann Odison and Melissa Misowitz and they do an amazing job. So if you're, if you're around on Saturday, December seventh, stop in and see all the activity.
And that is at the same time as this Christmas market.
That's right, the Yuletide market, good point, yeah, the Yuletide market starts at four. So the idea is that the market ends, you know, the, excuse me. The Yuletide open house ends and the people will find their way over to the market. And that is food trucks, craft benders, the lighting of the common with music from the church bells at about four o'clock, a little few minutes after four, and that's going to be a great event.
Yes.
Dress warmly and stop into the common on that night.
The Telegram had a nice article on it last night.
Oh, did they? Oh, excellent.
Yesterday, excuse me.
Did they? Oh, I missed it.
Oh, good.
Just a little article, but it was, it's a nice announcement.
Yeah, and I, we just learned that the firefighters who are selling chili are giving the proceeds of their gift to the family of the firefighter who was lost in Worcester this month. Yeah, so that's really nice.
Yeah, they were honored today. It was a ceremony in Worcester for all of the ones last year. Okay, other business. I guess the only thing I can think of is a number of us went to the Board of Library Trustees meeting on Saturday and they had somebody there from the correct count census group and they were talking about libraries being sort of information points for the census.
Yes.
Have we done that before?
Well, we, we've always been available to help people with the census, but not a real focused effort. And this, that group is working through the Board of Library Commissioners and they've created a live guide to help libraries look at ways they can support the effort. So I have shared that with Priya and she's going to work with her team to take the webinar, look at it and see if there's ways we can.
Oh, great.
Yeah, I mean, we always obviously have the public computers, but part of it might be training staff to make sure they know how to help people and instruct people when they come in. So they, as you mentioned, they are encouraging people to take it online. Not everyone has computers, so public computer. And then obviously promotion of it.
Ellen, I did pick up extra copies of the handouts. And, you know, it's important to emphasize how critical those accurate counts are in terms of federal funding, including libraries.
Yes, L S T A is all based on census, yes, exactly. Yeah, thank you for that.
Any other business? Okay, can I have a motion? Then our next meeting is December tenth. I'd like to take a, I guess we'll take a census right now about people who, somebody want to make a motion to go into executive session and then we'll.
I move that we move into executive session.
I second it.
And not to return, right? And we all, we all have to verbally say, yeah, and not to return. So we can, right, we can let our cameraman go first.
Our cameraman can go first.
And, but everybody has to, it's a roll call vote, so, okay, so, I, yes.
I agree.
I agree.
I agree.
I agree.
Agree.
I agree. And I agree. Okay, so we, our next meeting is December tenth. This meeting is adjourned and we'll go into executive session. Thanks, everybody, you're all set, thank you.